Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The church has.
Everybody went to the wedding.
We really appreciate.
We got Bailey plumbing.
I don't know.
I think they should have to pay for us to be down.
Okay.
Six weeks ago.
My church called me freaking out.
I'm gonna say one.
I said, I gave you my residency number.
Yeah.
I'm in a board meeting.
It's Indiana.
Well.
I can have Damon come over maybe at seven o'clock to take a look and see what's going on.
Yeah, can there be a call back now?
Maybe you call Dylan and get the 411 from him. See what he says.
Lehman, can I talk to you when it's open?
Actually, I just got a text from somebody in church.
Probably Ray, Ray Neese. I got the call like five, 10 minutes ago, so I don't know what's going on.
We not only need to replace our shut-off valve, we need to replace the copper line that goes because it's leaking everywhere. Andrew's trying to shut it off best he can. Okay, that's fine.
Yes.
Well, you do what you gotta do, I understand. But if we get Delbert to do it, would you be upset? Okay. I think Andrew's gonna ask Jeff if he could.
Lori, I'm gonna go ahead and pencil in the library.
Where are you gonna put them?
I'll just put them after Damon. Decatur County Greensburg Public Library, what's the official name?
Greensburg, Decatur County Public Library.
Okay, two-minute warning. Somebody's mics are on. Terilyn, are we live as far as you can tell? Okay.
They're not gonna go there, we're too old. I'm sorry, that's not very nice. You were just saying. Yep.
Okay, I've got 6:30. Oh, hang on.
Uh-oh.
Sorry. Can't take it. Where'd Damon go? Okay. All right, I'll call the meeting to order at 6:30. Let's start with a pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So Glenn and Russell are both in Florida tonight. I talked to Russell today. He gloated. It was eighty-some degrees down there. He had been fishing, they caught... What was it, eighty, ninety fish? I didn't ask what kind. But there was another boat next to them, said they caught over a hundred. So, anyway. We're here to pick up the slack. All right. Have my board members had a chance to look at the minutes from the last meeting, January 13?
Yes.
Okay. Any changes or additions? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve these as presented.
I'll make the motion.
Can I get a second, please?
Make, or a second?
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Thank you. The hand-down will be easy tonight.
Yeah, right?
Okay. Next will be approval of funeral deeds, annual fishing permit. So the fishing permit, Lori, I assume we sign one every year, once a year?
Yeah, it's the same word every year, just new date.
Okay. You can take a look at that, sign it and pass it down. So, the rest of the payroll stuff, have my board members had a chance to take a look at all that online?
Yes.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we approve the payroll vouchers, monthly bills, adjustments, funeral deeds, and the annual fishing permit. Can I get a second, please?
I'll make a second.
Okay, Jenny? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I think there's a few funeral deeds in here. I can go down. One, two, three, four. There we are. Okay, Rachel, you can come on up. Commonwealth update.
Did I give it too much time? Sorry, I know I sent it out really late. The good thing is I don't really have anything to update on. As far as the project goes, we have a meeting coming up on Thursday. Here, we'll talk more about their schedule. I distributed minutes from the last meeting. Right now, they are not anticipated to start putting in pipe until March. And then, the actual digging and pipe work and stuff at the plant probably won't be until summer. So, probably be slow for the next several months. But hopefully they start getting pipe in the ground soon. But if you flip it over to the back or the second page, I don't know how it printed. The one thing I did want to say was that the water agreed order was... One of the water agreed orders is closed out. I know Brian's been following this very closely.
That's one of them I forgot to include in the email, some good news.
Yes, yes. So that one will be, no longer be a compliance issue, you have to continue to... They will continue to watch to make sure the problem doesn't happen again. But thanks to Damon and Jay, that one got resolved. That's a, that's a good thing. No news on any of the rest of them, though, but we'll keep tracking them.
Any questions for Rachel?
Thank you.
We have the update meeting on Thursday at 1:00 at the town hall. Lori and I have been going. Okay. Appointing a BZA representative. We announced this back in, I believe, December. Joyce Brenly is from the previous town council of Westport, is a member of the Board of Zoning Appeals. And her term was up at the end of the year. She agreed to stay on until we found a replacement for her. To my knowledge, we had two people interested. One of them, my understanding was not so much interested. I got that wrong. I apologize, I didn't think the interest was real, real heavy, real great. But we came across a very interested candidate, Andrew Bruni. And he is here with us tonight. Andrew, would you come up?
Yes.
You didn't have to bring your bio with you, did you?
No, I did not.
I mean, I could probably go find it. Does Jenny or Dolores have any questions for Andrew, or... Did you print out? Bless your heart. It's embedded in there. So to the Westport Town Board, Andrew says, "I want to first thank you for your consideration for nomination to the Decatur County Board of Zoning Appeals. Secondly, I wanted to give the board members a little background on myself personally and professionally as it would relate to being a member on the BZA. I was born and raised in Decatur County, graduating from South Decatur High School 2011. Andrew holds a bachelor's degree from Purdue University and a master's of public administration from Indiana Wesleyan. Professionally, he's a small business owner, works full-time marketing for a local nonprofit healthcare organization. He lives outside of Westport on 1100 South. If y'all know where the Bruces have lived forever, Andrew's family is building houses in that complex just east of where the Bruces are. He recently built a home there. My experience, his experience with purchasing land, subdividing and building a house as the general contractor has brought me to work closely with the area plan office and gain firsthand experience with the zoning in the county. Thanks again for your consideration of appointment to the county, Decatur County BZA. Look forward to meeting with you next week at the town council meeting. Sincerely, Andrew Bruni." Full disclosure, I, I know Andrew pretty well. I coached him in junior high golf in South Decatur. We had a lot of fun out, out on the golf course. Andrew is grown now, he's... Did you bring your lovely wife with you?
I did, yeah, she's in the back row there.
Hello, welcome, nice to meet you. But you guys have any questions for him?
I've known him since he was in kindergarten, so I have no problem.
Thank you.
So I guess I'm the only one that doesn't know you, but I still don't have a problem.
That's good to hear, yeah.
I will say this, I sent Andrew, there's two or three attachments of information that the, that the county BZA gave me to share with potential candidates. And I believe he read every page of it. In our discussion, he, he knew all the answers to the questions that I had, and I was, I was shocked because some of the material is a real snoozer. So, I will make the motion that we appoint Andrew Bruni as the Westport representative to the Decatur County Board of Zoning Appeals.
Nice.
Second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I think I heard it unanimous. Andrew?
Thank you.
Sir?
Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. What's on the screen is probably a little different than the agenda you've got in your hand. The wording on these things gets a little squirrely. So the next thing we want to do is appoint a representative to the area plan, the Advisory Council on Town Affairs. So what this is, as best as I can explain it, there, the area plan commission, we just put Andrew on the Board of Zoning Appeals. The area plan has a seat on it for the small towns. And that, that seat for the small towns is currently occupied by Jay Shutmer from Milhousen. Jay has recently moved out of Milhousen, he's no longer on the town council in Milhousen, and he's no longer on the area plan. So, the responsibility falls to this Advisory Council on Town Affairs, made up of Westport, Milhousen, New Point, and St. Paul, to come up with another person to fill that seat on the area plan commission. The first step is to come up with the representatives from the four small towns. Milhousen just appointed their clerk, Helen Wagner, I believe is her name. New Point is meeting tonight. I don't know who they're going to appoint. And I talked to the St. Paul clerk last week, and I have not followed up with her. I'm helping out the area plan office in, in trying to get all the small towns together to, to appoint four people, one from each town, because we have a new area plan director, and we have a new building inspector in the area plan office. So they're all getting their, getting their bearings, getting their feet wet. And what I would like to do, I, I was on this Advisory Council on Town Affairs when I was on the council previously. I may not have put that in the email, or did I? I didn't. But my 12 years prior on the board, I was on this. This council typically meets one time, they appoint the representative of the area plan, and they don't meet again for four years until something changes. But all of the boards in the county, most of them, if not all, have turned over, including Westport. And we need to appoint somebody to the Advisory Council on Town Affairs, which will be one of four that actually picks a new person to go to the area plan. In, in Milhousen's case, it was Jay Shutmer. And I think he got reappointed to multiple terms. Because back when I was on the board previously, he was, he was our representative then, and he's remained the small-town representative up to now, when he moved out of Milhousen. So, and I am willing to do this, sit on the Advisory Council on Town Affairs. The, the county ordinance that covers this even talks about the four towns meeting in the town hall of the largest population town, which basically specifies Westport. Come to here, we sit down, we meet, and we come up with somebody, whether it's one of us four, which I'm not interested in sitting on the area plan, I'll sit on the advisory council that figures out who we're gonna put, but I don't want to be on the area plan. But... There's Mudd.
Sure.
We need one representative from each of the four small towns to figure out who's gonna be on the area plan. I'm willing to do this.
Well, I'm, I'm willing to nominate you.
Okay.
I will second that nomination.
All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
Whatever.
Behave yourself.
Just, just...
Was that, that was an aye for real, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was, I'm sorry. Been a day.
Okay. Spring dumpster day. Jenny, you want to talk about this?
Sure. So, the recycling board typically does two recycling events in Westport. Last year, the attendance was way down for the recycling event. Now, we believed that part of that was from the dumpster event that Westport does, being directly before the recycling event. So a lot of recycling items got put in the dumpster. So, the recycling board asked if we would not do it the, the weekend before. Now, I don't think that it really matters when, they are just asking that we not have it back-to-back, which makes sense. I'm not sure how it benefits the community to have it back-to-back. So, because the attendance has been way down, they actually kicked around the idea of getting rid of the recycling program, period, down here. So, what they've done for this year is that they have taken away the fall one, and we're only doing the spring one. And based on attendance, we will see how it goes for next year. So, I know that we've always done the dumpster on the same date every single year.
We always do the dumpster the Thursday prior to that weekend, which usually is around Earth Day. So it was kind of like, make it Earth Day, clean up the world kind of thing. And in the past, there were a lot of TVs and stuff that we would sit on the side of town hall to put, so we tried to filter out, but it kind of depends on who's working the dumpster, what council members are there, kind of monitoring what trash is going into the dumpsters, as to what happens with what goes into recycling and what goes into the dumpster.
Yeah, but also, my thing is, is that how many people need the dumpster on Thursday and the recycling on Saturday? I'm just not sure that that actually benefits the, the community. I could be wrong, but I'm just not sure how having it on Thursday and Saturday right next to each other actually helps.
Your initial, your initial suggestion was to push our dumpster day to the week after recycling.
And then I had...
Which would be like 17, 18 of April.
So, and then I had sent a follow-up email.
Okay.
That, I don't think that the, if it's before or after, or that, I don't think really matters. It's just having them back-to-back that is, I think, hurting the, the numbers and the outcomes. So, my suggestion is just to not have them back-to-back.
My thought was, if we could... When, when Glenn was down there, we, we gave him five minutes worth of training on how to police the dumpster, and it kind of became a bit of a joke. But if we could get a little more training as to what we should not put in the main dumpsters, and we should reserve for Saturday, the 12th, we, we could police it better. I, I like the idea of having 10 and 11 to remind everybody, hey, if you've got recyclables, bring them Saturday, for anybody that comes through and wants to use the regular dumpster. I, I could be swayed to go ahead and have our dumpster the week after. We'll, we'll see, we would have to do plenty of advertising about the recycling event on the 12th to make sure it's well represented, since it stands by itself.
So, last year, while we were out at the recycling event, standing there doing nothing because nobody was coming, we discussed, one, moving the location to where it was more visible, but the more we talked, the more we thought that would actually not be helpful because everybody is so used to it being at that location. We talked about advertising, and that last year, the advertising was not necessarily targeted to the way Westport residents received news. So, she has these flyers, and she will be taking them to businesses, as well as hopefully doing a mailer in the, in the water bill. So hopefully, the advertising will help bring in some numbers. I just want to emphasize, it was really bad last year.
We also had a lot of bad feedback at a couple of council meetings prior to that recycling event. Someone shot down the shredding and said it wasn't secure, and there was a lot of issues. So I wondered if that played into it, too.
Okay, this is the first I'm hearing about that.
You were here for that meeting.
I'm... About the shredding being secure? Yeah, you'll have to pull that up for me, because, but anyway, the shredding is a different company, anyway.
Let's, I'm okay in doing it, Dolores, the week after, to try it. Our, our big dumpsters.
Okay, if you put the recycling bin out there, I know what's gonna happen. Everybody's gonna pull up with their junk.
Well...
Their trucks.
That's, that, the 12th, April 12th is when it's advertised, we got the flyer.
Yeah, yeah. Which we mail out every time, it always goes in the water bills, every, every cycle it has went in the water bill.
It's gonna be policed properly, that Saturday it will be.
So we tell them to take the junk home and bring it back?
Next week. If it doesn't go, if, if they can't take it as a recyclable.
And from my understanding, the reason that we never did it on the same day was because of space availability, is that correct?
Yeah, I can understand that, yeah. But when we send out notification of the electronic recycling and paper shredding, we probably need to add some verbiage as to what electronic recycling does cover to minimize the amount of junk that we do get.
Well, we can't take it, well...
We just can't take it.
We, well, we can, because if it's, if it's... When I worked on that one day, it was just a lot of junk, I mean, a lot of nasty stuff that we could...
For the dumpster.
For the regular, you know, the regular.
Yeah.
And if they, if they confuse that, and they bring that along with the recyclable or whatever, where we gonna put that junk?
Let's try it, having the recycling first, and see if that reduces any of the recyclables that we get in the dumpsters that we pay for.
And then I do have a suggestion for next year, is that, so the recycling board does their schedule of events by November of, of the previous year. So, for next year, what I would recommend is maybe doing the dumpster day here in the spring, and pushing back the recycling day till the fall.
So it stands on its own?
Yes, I think that, in future, I think that would probably be the best.
Even though they have the talks-away days at the fairground, the big one in the fall, you don't think that would take away from it?
I don't think so, no.
I just wonder how much interest there truly is for the recycling period here.
Is the electronic recycling, the one, Jenny is our representative to the...
On the recycling board.
To the recycling board. That's the reason I keep looking to her. Is that the one where if it's got a cord, they'll take it, pretty much, as long as it doesn't have freon in it?
Right, yes.
So no air conditioners, no humidifiers, but just about anything else that has a cord?
Yes.
They'll take it. Okay. Well, if, if we can, if we can get this updated to say that, we could put, we can do a two-sided copy and put it in the, put it in the water bill about the recycling day on the 12th, and then the town big dumpster days would be Thursday and Friday, the 17th and 18th, the next week. Want to give it a try, Dolores?
Sure.
Let's try it and see what happens. I like the idea of moving recycling to the fall and doing spring cleaning dumpsters in the spring.
Yeah, that, that...
I, I really like that as a long-term solution for next year.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah. Okay. Do we, I don't think we need to vote on that, do we?
No, what was the dates again?
17th and 18th of April will be town big trash, big dumpster day at the town hall, and electronic recycling, anything with a cord. Will be April 12th on Saturday, 9 to 11.
And, um, next month, I will bring the information from the, the board on what's accepted, what's not accepted, I'll bring all that information.
Cool. All right.
And the new paper shredding company.
So the recycling, 9:00 to 11:00?
On Saturday, the 12th.
Okay, and then, is there a time on the dumpster day?
Eight to five.
It's during the, during the, during the day, eight to five.
What about like if you work, can-
As long as we advertise it far enough in advance and maybe we look at having somebody do a second shift down there. Maybe five to seven or something.
Because even advertising it in advance doesn't mean that you can take off work.
Right.
Why can't we have one of those days on Saturday? Is there going?
The problem with the Saturday, with the weekend carryover was that a lot of people were dumping after hours and overfilling the dumpsters. We had that happen last fall. We had to leave one of the dumpsters over the weekend and it was overflowing when we came in Monday.
Yeah. Minimizes that.
Yeah.
Doing it Thursday and Friday. So, we can look into carrying it over another, an extra couple of hours on Thursday. It'd be a long day, but by April, Glenn and Russell would be back. Normally, we've, we've all five been able to participate in some way, shape or form. So, Jenny can easily do, do the Saturday, I believe. Can you not?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And between the, the other four of us, we can cover Thursday and, and Friday. Friday, I think last year, we, we knocked it off at noon. It had just petered out to where not much, not much was happening after that. Okay. There is an ordinance on here. Twenty twenty-five dash one purchasing procedures. It sets forth amounts and who has a sign-off authority, how many quotes we need to get. There's lots of small print here. I would probably be in favor of tabling this until next month. Just bring it back and make sure we get electronic copies. I, I will get electronic copies to Russell and to Glenn.
They were sent with the-
They were?
Meeting stuff, so they should have that.
Okay, I can offer to, to print it out for them if they're, or you can.
I'll have to print it. It's kind of complicated to print.
Yeah.
So, but from what I understand, this is just how we are supposed to purchase things, which we've already been following. We just don't have this signed thing on file?
We have an old one. It's from the nineties and it's out of date and it doesn't quite meet new legislation. So, we were told by auditors that we need to update ours. We've been told a couple of times and it's the hot thing, like when the audits are coming out the last couple of years, this is what they're signing. So, I want to be above and ahead of the audit.
Right, absolutely.
Okay. Superintendent Public Works, Damon.
Hello. I just got a couple of things this evening. One, getting permission to move forward with the skid loader. Purchasing it.
And the final winning bid was?
The Gil with the Letts Hardware, I believe it was sixty-six thousand, eight hundred and six dollars. That was with the-
Sixty-six, eight oh six?
Correct.
Okay.
I did not bring the other two with me since-
Okay, yeah.
We went over them last month. I don't think I brought them with me.
I will make a motion that we approve the Letts Hardware bid for the Gil skid loader. From Letts Hardware, it's sixty-six thousand, eight hundred and six dollars. Can I get a second, please?
I'll second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, it was unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
HVAC for the community building here. I hear we've got a thirty-three-year-old furnace that-
I guess you're going to do it, okay.
They can't get parts from it. That's just, correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, it was, we had it serviced and they got it working for the weekend, but it's, like you said, I believe they said it was thirty, thirty-three years old. They said it cannot, they, they wouldn't even really kind of guarantee it for the weekend, but it made it through the weekend, but it needs replaced. And that bid was, it was Coors Heating and Air. It was fifty-five hundred and nine dollars. Just getting permission to spend that. I mean, it's kind of, kind of emergency deal. It's got to be replaced because it's, it's not working now. We was able to get through the weekend.
This is what the-
For the front furnace here in the building.
Yeah, this is what the community building account is for, stuff like this.
Correct.
But we need to get this taken care of. I, I've got no problem.
This comes out of the general fund, actually.
Okay.
You don't have any money in there yet.
Okay. I'll make the motion that we approve the Coors estimate to replace, replace the furnace for fifty-five oh nine. Can I get a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
I think that's all I have. Anybody have anything for me?
Any word of what's going on over there by Pocans?
Uh, no, I got, I sent the guys over there.
Okay.
To one of them's out of town.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Decatur County?
Is there just one furnace for this building?
Oh, no, there's a-
My question is, are the others thirty-three years old? Do we need that for replacing those? Or they break?
No, we replaced one in twenty-two and we replaced one, was it last year?
Yeah, I think last-
We've done it twice, so this should be the last one to be replaced, hopefully.
Okay, Greensburg, Decatur County Public Library. Come up and tell us what's going on here.
So official.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I'm a librarian, so I like statistics and that kind of stuff, so there you go. Good evening, members of the Westport Town Council. My name is Vanessa Martin and I am the Director at the Greensburg Decatur County Public Library. I have been at the library for fourteen years, eight of those as the Director. I appreciate that you've asked me to come and give you a little more information about the Westport Branch Library as we transitioned to a new Branch Assistant and an updated vision for the library and the community. I thought I'd start with a little bit of history on how we got here and then share some of the facts with you. After thirty-nine years with the library, our former Branch Assistant, Deb Smith, decided to retire. And at that point, we conducted interviews and hired Katrina Freeman as our new Branch Assistant, and she's here this evening. In conversations with her, we decided that the Branch Library needed an overall facelift. We wanted to rethink operating hours, programs, and the library itself. We would also need to hire another staff member to accomplish these aspirations. The Library Board approved new hours for the library and those started in January. With the revision in library hours, we want to try to offer daytime programming to children and families to help build the community. Some of the ideas include bingo, crafts, book clubs, family game night, family art programs, family instructional programs, STEAM programs, and storytime for younger children. With this, we would ask if we might be allowed to use the front room here in the community building two or maybe three times a month to host these programs. We had our first bingo program on January twenty-second, and we had sixteen people attend, which is a great number. I think that's a great start and an example of exciting things to come. I have shared with you stats, a stat sheet with some of the fun and important things that have happened in the last year. And I hope that those numbers increase as we move to accomplish new and engaging programs, add new items to our collection, and update the library for the future to help build our sense of community here in Westport. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. And then I'm also willing to take any of your suggestions or questions or anything like that at, at any time. So, I included my contact information on the bottom of that sheet, so if you need, need to contact me for anything, you can.
It sounds like the programming is going to be, it would be regular as far as what days?
Yes, it would be, it would be regular. Definitely with your storytimes, those are regular at the main library, so those would be, yeah, they would be on a, on a consistent basis.
The reason I ask, that would be a key for Connie to lay in scheduling for that.
Okay.
So, have you, have you met Connie?
I, I know who Connie is.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the fact that that's regular, the same adult versus children program is going to be on the same day at the same time for the-
And we plan out months in advance. I mean, we already have our summer reading stuff planned, so, and it's, you know, just February, so, yeah, we plan months in advance.
Okay. Well, please coordinate with her so she can lay that in. Connie, I guess if there's a funeral dinner or something that wants the front room, maybe we offer them the back room as an alternative if there is a conflict on a, a day that, I assume you guys would, in using the front room, would not need the kitchen.
Um, I think it would depend on what kind of program we were doing.
Okay.
Because I can think with some STEAM programs or something like that, you might want to use-
Okay.
Um, something in the kitchen, um, or water or, you know-
And then ti- timing might be significant then if there was a funeral dinner or, or urgent need or something.
Yeah, we definitely understand that.
But as long as we are coordinating with Connie, she can, she could orchestrate that, I would think.
Okay.
Okay, well, it's nice to meet you. Thank you for coming.
Nice to meet you. Thank you for having me. All right.
Brian, thanks for supporting your library person. Okay, that brings us to the end of the agenda. This opens up the public comment portion of our meeting. Comments are limited to three minutes and anybody can come up to the mic if they have anything that they need to say. Yeah, Russ, Walter, come on up.
Back there. Okay, the only thing I, I want to ask about is, you know what I'm going to ask about?
Go ahead.
Two corners. Westport Business Association or something, another owns one of them?
The Glenn McCullough Apartments?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's getting to be a dump.
So, it's getting worse, not better?
Westport's name's on that now.
Getting worse, not better is what you're saying?
It's a dump.
Okay.
And then Tollers ain't getting any better. But the one with Westport on the front of it now, why ain't something being done? You still got the same dopers in there.
There's appliances and trash and all kinds of stuff sitting in front of the apartments.
And you still have the dopers in there.
I can, I, there's, the next meeting of the Business Association, where's my mouse? Is?
Was this discussed at one point?
Wednesday, the nineteenth.
So, is that open to, is that just a closed meeting?
No, they're, they're open to, for folks to come in. We have supper at five-thirty. It's ten dollars if you want to eat.
I just want to get something done.
The meeting starts at six. I can carry your, your concerns in there.
I've been five years now trying to get something done on that corner.
Well, it changed hands and, and the hope was that-
That's what, that's what I'm really getting at.
Yeah.
Why is it still the same and it changed hand and, and it's got Westport in front of it now?
Yeah, I, I don't know, but we can find out.
And our tax money went to buy that. I heard you got a grant for that.
It was a grant from the county to the Business Association.
So, that was our tax money that bought it. Why can't something be done?
I, I can carve out a space for you in, in the nineteenth meeting if you want to come. Or you want to, you want me to try to represent? I'll, I'll, I'll do what I can. I'll do my best.
It's, I mean, it's just ridiculous that something like that, we have to put up with something like that. I know it's not over on your side of the road or your side of the road or anybody's side of the road, but I have to look at it every day.
On Danny Toller, Russell has developed a pretty good relationship with him. And hopefully, when he gets, when he gets back, we can, we can get him some more help. All right, thank you. Anybody else?
I have something.
Okay, Gloria?
I'm putting my town resident hat on for this. I'm not a clerk treasurer right now at this point. So, on January eleventh, I found a meter lid broken under the snow whilst some neighbors were helping me clear our driveway in front of my house. I immediately reported it to Westport Water Utility. Damon checked it out and found damage and said that the lid was busted. On Sunday, January fifth through Monday, January sixth, we got twelve inches of snow that landed in Westport and we were snowed in. Late that night, January fifth, someone came through our alley with a skid loader and cleared the alley. They cleared my driveway and they cleared in front of my house. I didn't know who it was at the time and didn't know they were going to clear our driveway. Later, I found out that my husband's employer had sent them over to help us out because he heard that I was going to have to walk to work the next day. The water meter was buried under snow then and continued to be buried under until January eleventh, that Saturday, when some other neighbors helped me to clear the snow in front of my house after the second snowstorm. At that point, when we found it, we believed that the skid loader possibly ran over the water meter that previous Monday on the eleventh, or on the fifth. And that would have been heavy enough to bust the lid. I believe the incident was an accident since we did not hire the snow removal either time and people were trying to help us out with the goodness of their hearts. Although it was an accident, I received an invoice for eighty-two dollars and twenty-four cents to replace the water meter lid. I'm asking that the Town Council consider an adjustment to waive the meter lid fee as this was not my fault. My last leak adjustment was April two thousand and fourteen and my monthly bill is over a hundred dollars. So, I'm asking you guys to consider waiving this invoice as I had no control over the damage.
I don't think we have ever had a waiver for a broken meter lid. Is that correct, Damon? In order to avoid the showing of favoritism, Gloria, I'll pay for your meter lid. Done deal.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
I'll take care of it. Problem solved. Anything else?
I have a few to get home with, then, Brian. I did want to make sure the town doesn't hear. We have an old Simplicity mower out in the cemetery that we don't use much anymore. I just want to make sure you guys didn't care that we take sealed bids on.
Hey. Is there a proper way to advertise for those sealed bids?
I usually, the way to take care of that, I just want to make sure the board don't care if we get rid of it.
Okay.
I usually just take the pictures and get the info and she advert, she, uh, she posts it and does all that. I just want to make sure I got you guys a button here.
I've got no problem with that.
Is it a va, is it a substantial value?
It's, it's not. I just want to make sure they didn't care if we got rid of it. It's not, it's not a high-dollar item. I just basically just want to make sure you guys didn't care if we got rid of it. It's just an old, uh, wheel drive, thirty-eight inch or forty-inch deck or something. It's, it's nothing fancy. Just.
Nope.
Fine with me?
I, I'd recommend taking a vote on that.
Okay.
If it sounds like it's going to be disposal of town property.
How do we describe the mower, Damon?
I didn't bring all the info. It's, it's just, uh, I guess not what color and orange Simplicity riding mower. I, I don't, I don't-
Is it the oldest one that we have?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
It's, uh, it's just a- I apologize.
That's okay.
I just, I was going to bring the info and I spaced it and-
Yeah, I will make a motion that we, uh, start the process to take sealed bids to dispose of.
Do you want to, I have all the info on it? I can bring it back. It's not, I can, I have to get rid of this one. I mean, it's not, not huge till, I just want to get it out of my way.
I'd recommend just that it's clear in minutes and just so we have a clear vote on that and we're authorized then to dispose of town property.
The, the oldest Simplicity?
Actually, hang on a second. I'm going to go help myself tonight. I did take a picture of it. I do have a picture of it. It just says Simplicity. So, I'll, I'll get more info. We can come back next one.
Okay. You want to put that on the agenda for next month?
Sure.
Disposal of the old Simplicity. All right. Anything else? All right, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Can I get a second?
A second.
All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody. I'll bring my checkbook tomorrow. I'll bring my checkbook tomorrow.